Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Pleasantville meeting. Today is Monday, February 22. If you are watching live on Monday, February 22, we invite you to call in with your thoughts or comments. The call-in number is 769-1677. As you know, you can also pick us up either live on PCTV76.org or through on-demand video, which you can also pick up on the web at PCTV76.org. I had a couple of announcements to make. And the first one is, we receive periodically letters from Cablevision indicating a channel lineup change. The village has no control over any of these things. We have no rights of, no rights nor any recourse. They have sent me an indication that they will be ending their affiliation with LATV, which is a Latin TV station on Channel 198, and that effective March 23, it will no longer be available. So that's a notification we got from Cablevision. For those of you who are following the question of Verizon FiOS, we passed the Verizon FiOS contract some time ago, and it is now in the hands of the State Public Service Commission in Albany. That's the required next step. We're informed that it is on their agenda for March 25, I think, is the date. And assuming that that contract is approved by the Public Service Commission in Albany on March 25, Verizon has indicated to us that they would start selling the FiOS TV product in Pleasantville shortly thereafter. By the current statistics, about 75% of village homes are on streets that are already built out for Verizon FiOS. So if you're on one of those streets, it would be an option available to you. The other 25% of the streets that are not yet built out are required to be built out in a staged process over the next five years. So stay tuned on that front. So roughly a month from now, we should hear from the Public Service Commission. As all of you know, we have had an ongoing battle with Con Edison regarding tree cutting. They have had several rounds of tree cutting around the distribution lines, which are the lines that are running in front of houses on streets. And then, over the last several months, have come through the village in something of a reign of terror, cutting trees down around the transmission lines, which are the high-tension lines on towers. We have vigorously argued about this with Con Edison and have brought it to the attention of John Nonna, our county legislator, as well as Andrew Stewart-Cousins, our state senator, as well as Con Ed, with whom we continue to negotiate some sort of reparations for the damage done to our park. But there was a meeting today at the county legislators' meeting room regarding a potential resolution on their part to try to create a moratorium on further cutting in Westchester County. And Mindy Barard was present and can update us on the going-on.
Right. This was the Environmental, the Committee on Environmental and Energy. And they're considering legislation that is cosponsored by Legislative Nona on a moratorium on the Con Ed tree-cutting program, which really doesn't help the Village of Pleasantville at all because they've already cut all our trees down. And it was quite interesting. They had the whole group from Con Edison there that we have met with on many occasions already. Nobody from the PSC was there. And various community groups, there were a number of Pleasantville residents, and I was very glad to see them come out. Very crowded room. And basically, Con Edison gave a brief statement of the 2003 outage and why now they have been doing this line-clearing to protect the grid. And then they got up and some legislative, they, we had a little presentation of the Con Edison plan on how the gradual cutting of the transmission wires and then some pictures of the devastation throughout the county. There was a few in there from Pleasantville of Nanny Hagen. But really didn't portray the real devastation that we've had in the village, but you could definitely see it all over the county. And then various groups from the county, a very active and vocal group from Greenberg spoke, and they laid out five points. One of them is the moratorium on any cutting. The other is the devaluation to our property for various reasons, as we all know. And the quality control of the PSC, or the oversight, that there was no oversight from the PSC. And proper notification to people in municipalities that this, any utility would come through. Jim, John Tomlin, who is the, well, is that his name?
Yeah, John Tomlin.
From Andre Stewart-Cousins office. Senator Cousins has cosponsored a, some legislation that would give, make a utility notify municipalities 60 days prior to any type of activity and notification of the residents, and then 30 days prior to the activity to have a public meeting explaining what they were going to do. So basically, the meeting had to be cut short because at the county, there's meetings scheduled in that room. And if your meeting time is up, your meeting time is up. So where they left it, basically, is they're going to have another meeting. And they're going to look into what the PSC's role is and everything, and looking further into the moratorium on the tree-cutting and Con Edison. So I think that was about it.
Why didn't they put a moratorium on until they get, I mean, until they figured it out?
Well, I know. They could not vote. They ran out of time to vote. I don't know when they set the next meeting. I'll let you know about that. I don't know. They could not, and then basically, most of the cutting has been done.
And this, well, look, it's, but this whole legislation that's proposed by Andrew Stewart-Cousins, I mean, basically, we experienced all of that. They gave us a very long lead time. Didn't help us one bit.
Well, I think that was one of the things I said when I spoke, was that it doesn't, you know, people, it's not that, Con Edison's stand was, what did he say? The people didn't understand the scope of the work. They totally understood the scope of the work. It's just they don't agree with the scope of the work. They don't agree that you should cut down, you know, these trees and that they were really serving the purpose. And it was more of a cookie-cutter mentality that, all right, that's a tree. It's in the right-of-way, it's down. It's on the list, which I still have never seen. Have we ever seen a list of the trees that are non-compatible?
We've seen some form of a list. It's not as though it's a very clear.
But other legislators felt like you did, Jonathan, that the Senator Cousins' legislation is really not going to stop the problem of the actual overzealous cutting and the rules.
The biggest problem with Con Ed is they have won, had won, until just a week ago, statewide person who's trained in biology. They now have two. They hired somebody from our office.
Oh, really?
They now have two people statewide, while the guy from our office.
Not you, I gather.
Not I. Not I. And they're both.
He's bitter after having been passed over.
Yeah, his tree got cut.
And they're both working out of downtown Manhattan, which, of course, is a great location to be, to see what's going on in the rest of the state, facetiously perhaps. But the fellow from our office, who was hired by them, told us that during his interview, a 45-minute interview, the guy who was interviewing him checked his cellphone, and he had 85 messages. That's, that is a huge issue with Con Ed. They really don't have anybody managing the program from the standpoint of somebody who knows something about the environment and who's trained in, you know, things that have to do with trees. And it's just evident, there is nobody out there. So this guy is going to be, once he gets his feet on the ground in his areas, which are going to include Westchester, by the way, and Putnam. He lives up in Putnam, actually lives in Dutchess, South Dutchess. One of his tasks is going to be going out and walking these areas that are going to be cut. So I think he'll be, he's a great guy. I think he'll be a terrific addition to Con Ed, to put him on staff. I just think that they're obviously woefully understaffed and people who know anything about forestry. What they have, people who know a whole boatload about chainsaws and dropping trees and very little about forestry and forest management. And that's a problem. So I doubt that there are many people who are out in the field with chainsaws who know a whole lot about the trees they're cutting, about the different species, and about what they're cutting to begin with. So, I mean, this cutting that went on here in Pleasantville, a lot of it was done during the winter months. There are no leaves on the trees. Unless you ID trees by bark and buds, I'm sure these guys, very few of them can, they're simply not going to be equipped. And even with the extra person on, who's going to walk, or assist in walking some of these routes where Con Ed's going to be cutting, that doesn't mean there's going to be somebody in the field directing these guys with the chainsaws. And that's a real problem. You just don't have a professional in the field who is saying, you know, leave that one, take these three, leave those, kind of thing. And these guys are indiscriminate, completely indiscriminate. Knowledgeable and indiscriminate because of their lack of knowledge.
The other frustrating aspect of it is, it may very well be that an oak tree has the potential, in a future decade, to grow to the height where it could potentially endanger the transmission wires. Doesn't mean it has to be cut down today. What they have essentially done is they've gone through and said, okay, here's the right-of-way, which may be 400 feet wide. If there's an oak tree 400 feet, you know, 200 feet from the towers, that's 10 feet high, it's got to be cut down because it's an incompatible species. Well, you know, you can come back in 50 years, and it still isn't going to be a problem.
Not only do they have an oak tree, interesting you bring that up, as one of the slowest-growing forest trees there are.
Right.
If they put on six inches a year, that's a pretty vigorous growth rate. So if you see a sapling that's 18, 16 to 18-foot sapling, by the time it doubles in size to, say, 32 to 36 feet, you're out there times two. Yeah, you're out there like, you know, 70-some odd years.
But you see, that's the cookie-cutter mentality. That's the cookie-cutter.
Even then, it's not a danger, depending on how far away the lawn is.
It's in that range, and they're cutting it down. They don't, they don't care how, if it's identified as an incompatible species, it's cut. And by the way, they said the tallest tulip, because they were complaining about cutting tulips trees down, Brian, so I was thinking of you. And the gentleman that was presenting from the county said the tallest tulip tree in Westchester County is 123 feet. So they could never endanger the high-tension wires, and they cut all the tulip trees down. That was on the list. 123 feet.
That's pretty tall.
That's tall?
Yeah, but that's the tallest in Westchester County.
Yeah.
Close depends where it's growing, I suppose. I mean, I think the bottom line, the takeaway from it is the reason we pointed out to you is that we've applied as much pressure as we possibly can and have had Con Ed here with a quite senior group now three times and continue to press, to press the case now that county is doing it, John Nonna, Andrew Stewart-Cousins, et cetera. But essentially, what we all have to realize is that the practice they have now instituted presages a completely different landscape. It will no longer be possible to have shade trees on the side of the street where there are power lines. And it will no longer be possible to have a reasonable buffer for homeowners who will live adjacent to the transmission line roots. And I, for the life of me, cannot understand why some of what's been cut down represents any kind of risk at all, when if it were to fall over suddenly, it still can't even approach the line. So ongoing discussion.
And that was brought up a number of times during, sorry, just so you know.
Thank you, Mindy.
You're welcome.
The other thing I wanted to report is that, as you may be aware, the county, at the end of the Sbatto administration, signed a settlement agreement with the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development on affordable housing. We've mentioned it before. It requires that the county build 750 units of affordable housing over the next seven years. However, the means by which that will happen is unclear. And the pool of money that's been assigned to it, which is about $60 million, is by everyone's estimation not enough money to build that many units. So we've been paying close attention to this because the Village of Pleasantville is one of the communities that's on the list as a possible site for affordable housing. We have had some proposals in our community for affordable housing projects, including one that's been discussed behind Lucy's Lounge on the parking lot that the village owns, and continue to talk about those as possibilities. At the same time, we're interested in the question of what the settlement may mean for us. And one piece of it is that the settlement implies that the county will be required to use both carrots and sticks to require compliance on the part of all the communities in Westchester. One thing that's already happened is that they have forwarded to us a model inclusionary zoning amendment, which would propose that we add to our zoning code of requirement that there be a 10% set aside of affordable units in any new housing project of a certain size or above. I think it's 40 units, something like that. At any rate, we've received that model zoning ordinance and are forwarding it on to the Planning Commission for their comment. What remains unclear is whether we will be required in some way or influenced in some way to enact or not enact that. I do know that the new county executive, Rob Astorino, has indicated that he has no intention nor any interest in suing a community over compliance with this. And yet, the question remains, how it can be implemented? So for anyone who is interested in more about this, you can find quite a bit on the web. But the development that happened last week is that the county filed, as it was required to by the end of January, an implementation plan. And the monitor for this settlement, an attorney with Debevois in Plimpton in New York by the name of James Johnson, replied with a letter that rejected the county's implementation plan. And I'm just going to read one paragraph of it, which is the paragraph that potentially affects us, and that is dealing with municipalities. This, again, is the commentary of the federally-appointed monitor of the housing settlement. He says, "The implementation plan's discussion of the model inclusionary zoning ordinance emphasizes the county's lack of authority with respect to zoning and land-use controls. The stipulation explicitly states that the county, quote, 'shall use all available means as appropriate,' unquote, including, quote, 'pursuing legal action,' unquote, to address a municipality's failure to act to promote the objectives of Paragraph 7 of the stipulation, which lay out the general requirements for 750 units or actions that hinder those objections.' The implementation plan should include a clear strategy for how the county will employ carrots and sticks to encourage compliance by municipal governments. The IP should also include the county's plan for monitoring local approval processes and municipality's cooperation with the county's efforts to implement the stipulation." So that's a matter that interests us as this progresses, both to understand the ways in which this may affect us and also to understand what the county may do down the line. So we'll continue to report as we hear anything more about that. Anybody else have anything to update?
Actually, I should mention something I had not reported back to the report. Last month, I attended a planning board meeting after we had discussed having ARB put into the circuit of site plan reviews, where they were having some authority to be present, such as in the overlay district and the commercial districts. And we had quite a long discussion with the planning board and the ARB chair. And we did work out a process that everybody agreed to, whereby the ARB would have applications referred to them before planning board action, so that for those projects which fell under their jurisdiction. So that was worked out informally, as we discussed, without having to pass any additional legislation.
So in other words, the way it all reads is going to work?
It's going to work.
Great. Thank you. Patty, why don't you just update people on the progress with the budget and what the schedule is for the budget as we look forward to the budget, which would be implemented for the new fiscal year, which begins June?
Sure, be happy to. We've got everything entered right now. What we're waiting on are some revenue projections and fund balance analysis. So it's kind of hard for us in early, you know, by early March, to come up with where we think we're going to be by the end of May. But that being said, we've got a pretty good handle on what our expenses are going to be next year. They're relatively flat.
Relatively flat in many areas.
Yeah, well, with, you know, noticeable exception of retirement system contributions.
The discretionary expenses are low.
You know, we have to have a budget on file by March 20. We'll have it on file well in advance of that, probably by the end of this week. We then should set some budget work sessions going over some of the analyses that we've put together. What we're waiting on is some determination on the Foxwoods settlement that's coming. This is a large surgiari, hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have to pay, in excess of $1.5 million, somewhere between $1.5 million and $1 million. You know, we know it's coming, and we know we're stuck with it. The question is, how are we going to fund it? And that's part of the budget analysis. So we're waiting to see what our options are. But in addition to that surgiari that will hit us by the end of this fiscal year, we've paid out over $300,000 so far in surgiaris. We have two on tonight. So our fund balance, you know, is taking a hit. We're looking at a projected increase between 4% and 5% next year with a $1.5 million fund balance contribution to get to that number. That's tough, you know? I mean, there could be better news in the next month or two, which can shape this number. But we're under 5%, which I'm very happy to say that's a really good place to start, you know, for a tentative budget.
No doubt.
And we'll have to see where we end up.
It's worth noting, last Tuesday night was the tax grievance night, which is a date set by Albany, when we hear grievances that people have challenging their tax assessments. And it's not required that you show up in person. But a number of people typically do, and did that night. But I think the takeaway that people need to understand is that we have roughly 150 tax surgiaris that were filed this year, which are roughly 2/3 residential and about 1/3 commercial. That is a number, total of 150, quite dramatically larger than the number of tax certs we've had in the past. And that's not unexpected nor different from what other communities are experiencing, both because people are perfectly understandably paying more attention to their family budgets. And in addition to that, people have the sense that their homes may have dropped in value and are therefore looking at that. So.
So just to get to your dates in the question, March 19, the budget will be on file for the public, the tentative budget. April 12 is our public hearing. And then the board has to adopt it by the 30th of April.
So March 19, the tentative budget. April 12 will be the official hearing. So.
The only thing I would say is that, I don't find it surprising, we haven't revalued property in this county in, what, 30 years? Something like that?
It varies by community.
The mayor is going to revale, right?
Well, my only recommendation is that everybody file a tax grievance and grieve your taxes, because that way you effectively create a revale. The village needs $12 million to run. So it's, you know, it is, if you don't, you're being disadvantaged because you're ending up subsidizing the condos and the co-ops and everybody else who does grieve and wins. And it's just blatantly unfair, the system that we are having to operate under, the fact that we haven't revalued. And so, you know, my recommendation is that everybody do it, because in essence, if everybody does it, it creates de facto a revaluation to begin with.
Just to be clear, you're not criticizing this board?
No. No.
I'm not sure.
Although it is within this board's, I think, power to do a revaluation for this community if we chose to do so.
But I think our assessor told us it would cost, what?
Probably a couple.
Half a million dollars to.
About that.
Yeah. I mean, clearly, it's something that's.
So half a million dollars, we could bond it. But, you know, in an environment where a $60,000 tax increase is a 1% tax increase, and that writes something more like $100,000. But in any case, it's a lot.
Yeah.
And to revale is a lot. And we, one of the reasons boards like this one have not done it is because we're hoping that it's done county-wide or even further than that.
Well, I mean, for us, it's a real issue from a cost standpoint because I think you get greater economies of scale. But it's also a politically.
I mean, what could happen is we could fund it, we could bond it, and then stimulus might could come along, and Barcliff could have it paid for. So, you know, I think we should wait.
I'm not recommending that we do it because of the cost issue. But I also don't believe that, I mean, politically, it's a tough thing to do because it is, and which is why it hasn't been done in 30 years, I'm convinced, because it does create a wealth shift. I mean, the people that haven't had their houses revalued in 15 or 20 years are paying a lot less taxes than somebody that's gone and improved their property and had to get a permit to do so, which automatically triggers a revaluation. So, you know, it's, it is, it's a tough one. But you can do it by filing a grievance, so, in essence. So I encourage everybody to do that.
I would respectfully disagree that I don't encourage everybody to file a tax grievance.
They bankrupt us. They bankrupt the whole village.
If that were to happen.
What would happen?
We'd have to hire a staff of people to deal with it. The reality is, and I think it's a subject that would be worth devoting a session of a board meeting, a public session, to talk about the way the system works and also to talk about the statistics that we get back from Albany through the Division of Real Property Services, which create a variety of numbers. And the key one for residences is what's called the RAR, the Residential Assessment Ratio, which is an indication of the percentage of market value represented by the assessments in a given sales year. And there's an interesting dynamic about it. And the more we talk about it, without the benefit of some well-put-together visual aids, we'll all start to cloud over because it becomes a technical matter. But we do have some measures by which we can assess the coefficient of dispersion, as they call it, which is, in essence, the degree to which our assessments vary from what happens in the market when homes are sold. And I think it'd be worth it for everybody to understand a little more about how the system works. But the takeaway, I think, that everybody needs to realize is that in a given year, I'm the last person to argue against people challenging their taxes if they think they have a case to make. I think that's how government is kept in its box, and I respect that. The reality is that if one individual or an institution gets a reduction in their assessment, it means that everybody else's taxes rise slightly in order to make up the difference. And that is hopefully a mechanism by which more fairness is introduced into the system as opposed to more unfairness. But it's a complicated and imprecise science. Even in the context of a town-wide revale, it remains a complicated and somewhat inexact science. And I think the more the community understands about the issues, the better off we are. As Patty mentioned, we've recently settled a couple of substantial tax challenges that have gone on for a number of years. We have recently undertaken an effort to be a little more proactive about clearing out some of the old backlog of these things. And Foxwoods is one example, which is obviously a big enterprise because it accounts for 254 units. And they have been successful in getting a tax reduction, which is quite substantial and which will, as Patty mentioned, engender a decision on this board about whether we pay it out in cash and therefore drain down our immediate resources or whether we might conceivably decide to bond it. For the benefit of those watching, it's interesting to note that regular single-family homes are assessed theoretically based on what they are worth on the market. But co-ops and condos are, by dint of state law, assessed not in the same way, but instead as commercial property, as if they were investment rentals. And lastly, commercial properties are subject to valuation in several different ways, including an income method that allows a property owner to present leases and costs of operation alike. So complicated business. Jim Timmings, our assessor, who is also the assessor of the town of Mount Pleasant, could assist, I think, in shedding some light on it. And I will make a note to devote a session to that at some point in the future. But for the moment, recognize that the effect of the overall pressure, downward pressure on the assessment base is that the tax rate per dollar of assessment goes up a little bit. So there you have it. Any further assessment comments?
Yes, on that assessment topic. I was surprised at how many surgiaris and grievances were filed this year. You mentioned that we're dealing with 250 at Foxwoods. 90, I think it was, single-family homes. That's 350. Were there any other co-ops?
Well, the Foxwoods one has been settled. So what's on the list right now is about 150, of which are about 100 are homes and about 50 are commercial properties.
So this year, we've settled on about 350 residential properties, counting all the.
The Foxwoods assessment is treated as a single cert, I think. It's not a.
I understand that. But if you look at households.
Yes.
So in Pleasantville, what's the number of households we have?
2,300?
2,300, 2,400.
So we've done about 15% of the tax base reviled in Pleasantville this year. It's kind of interesting.
Millions of dollars in assessed valuation we lost this year.
That's just the residential. And if you want to understand, the last year or two has also been kind of high. So we've been, we've been de facto kind of going through a reassessment for large homes.
The other problematic part of that is that from one year to the next, the conditions that exist in any given year may advantage a given piece of the marketplace. So, for example, the odd circumstance we have this year is that this residential assessment ratio, which is calculated by the state based on comparing the assessments of homes that actually sold, is based on a look-back period that's about 18 months old. And so. And so, perversely, our residential assessment ratio dropped to 7.07%, which means that, as compared to last year, the state announced that our assessments were a lower percentage of market value than they were the previous year, which would imply that market values had gone up, which indeed they did in that time period 18 months ago. Next year, the expectation is, when the slower housing market feeds in, that residential assessment ratio will go up. In other words, housing values are lower, assessments didn't change, and therefore assessments represent a bigger percentage of market value. So, the odd circumstance is that the case any individual homeowner or business owner might make is affected by the year in which they do it, and as a result, although the point you make is quite true, that it's kind of an incremental revaluation, that incremental revaluation in a turbulent marketplace is quite substantially different from year to year, or at least potentially so, so.
Well, I think your suggestion to have the assessor in to talk about some of this stuff is a good...
That would be, that would be a night for policy geeks, so. Come one, come all. I dare say that includes the five of us, and so we are guilty as charged, so. Unless there's some further question on that subject, was there any comment from the audience on any subject? Welcome.
Thank you.
Name and address if you would.
Sure. Howard Zane, 42 Gion Street. The reason I came, I had a few questions that I wanted to ask the board that relates to the intentions of, the stated intentions of the board to pursue private carting company to collect the garbage in the village, and...
It's not really our intention.
Okay.
Our stated intention is to look at it as an option.
Okay, I stand corrected.
That's fine.
Okay. The, I had three questions. Before I ask the first question, I just wanted to give a little background. The, and all this information I'm going to give is available on the internet. It's all Westchester County website. The, back in 2002, there was a local law, Chapter 826A, the laws of Westchester County, to add a new chapter so as to implement the Solid Waste Management Act and address the influence and the threat of the influence of organized crime in the solid waste and recycling industries operating in Westchester County. It's a 70-page law, obviously, I'm not going to read it all, but I would like to read the purpose of the law. The purpose of this chapter is to address the influence and the threat of influence of organized crime in the solid waste and recycling industries operating in Westchester County. The Westchester County Board of Legislators has found that organized crime permeates the solid waste hauling industry in Westchester County and constitutes a significant problem and matter of public concern within the county. The existence of cartels has produced anti-competitive effects in the industry, including but not limited to price fixing, the prevention of new entry into the industry, the existence of unconscionable customer contract terms, and the incidence of corruption. To address this problem, a matter of public concern, the Westchester County Board of Legislators has, through this local law, sought to expand the license application process, to modify the standard by which licenses for solid waste and recycling collection businesses are issued by the county in order to ensure the good character, honesty, and integrity of licensees, to institute a registration process for those solid waste brokers which may operate in the county, to encourage new entry into the industry, to encourage competition, to regulate and monitor customer contracts for solid waste and recyclables collections, and to expand the penalties for violation of the standards established herein. It is the intent of the Westchester County Board of Legislators to eliminate the influence of organized crime in the solid waste and recyclables collection industry, and thereby eliminate this significant problem and matter of public concern as referenced above in Westchester County. Now, that law, again, was 2002. One of the things that came out of that law is they formed a Westchester County Solid Waste Commission. And this commission has a number of functions. I'll just read a few of them. To perform background checks on all applicants, to issue licenses and registrations, to investigate all complaints against haulers that occur in Westchester County. The most recent annual report I was able to get was 2008, and part of the report is customer complaints. In 2008, the investigations of customer complaints and Carter complaints, there were 72 in 2008. That averages about one and a half a week. That number, incidentally, is up 40% from 2006. They have the last three concurrent, three years, three consecutive years. 2006 for 2008 was 44% increase in the number of customer complaints. They broke the complaints into three categories. Contract disputes, 60% of the complaints were contract disputes. Billing discrepancies, there were 10%. Failure to provide service, 30%.
And that's countywide?
Countywide. Those are the complaints that couldn't be resolved locally or with the Carter. They elevated up to the Solid Waste Commission. Some of those, they couldn't even resolve themselves. They have to, they deal with 11 law enforcement agencies, including the U.S. FBI, Westchester County DA's office, New York City Police Department, New York City Business Integrity Commission. Actually, there's 11 law enforcement agencies that the county, that Westchester Commission deals with. Now, my question...
That falls under the Environmental Facilities Department, which includes all carting from commercial zones, it includes all the reimbursement of tipping charges that they subsidize from municipalities like us, solid waste, recyclable. I mean, it's a huge, huge department in the county. I mean, that, those, you know, I don't know if those complaints were specific to just commercial carters or all of the other things that that's involved in, but it's a huge department.
The commission, one thing I wanted to point out in this 2008 report, the commission denied the application of one company due to contacts between the company's principal and a member of organized crime. So, I mean, the county is working on trying to clean up the industry, and they probably made a lot of progress, but it's, they still have work to be done. And my question to the board is, if a private Carter is, if the village has a contractor with a private Carter, what happens is they'll get, they'll get a decal, they'll put it on their truck, they go up to Charles Point, and they say, hey, this garbage is from Pleasantville. Nobody checks it at Charles Point, they dump it, and my concern is that who's going to monitor that there's no garbage that's outside of the Pleasantville residential garbage? Are we going to have a Pleasantville Solid Waste Commission? Are we going to have monitor, an independent monitor to check? Because they can come into town with a ton or two of something, they can pick up commercial garbage, they can stop and assening on the way up to Charles Point. So there's a lot of possibilities of them adding additional waste. So, my question is, how is it going to be monitored? So that was, that was one question.
I think, I think the first thing to be said about that is it depends how the contract is structured. Patty, you can chime in on this. Some of these contracts are flat-fee contracts, not based on the tonnage. Is that true, Patty?
Well, everything, the municipalities all handle it differently. Most of them allow the Carter to stand in their shoes and tip under the municipality's tipping, you know, license, so to speak.
Right, Justice Howard.
So what Howard was saying is true. They would be able to tip for a reduced fee, and we would get back these slips that say how much tonnage. Now, we have very good historical records on what our annual tonnage is, typically what gets recycled and what gets brought to Charles Point, and, you know, we have a fairly stable population here, so anything that was, you know, starting to skew one way or another could indicate that there were, you know, perhaps some problems with what the Carter was picking up or where he was getting it from. But we have trouble with our, I mean, we got a summons last week because our own department commingled things they weren't supposed to commingle. I'm dealing with a fine. This happens no matter who's picking up garbage. I hate to say it, but, you know, it's, you gotta stay on top of...
Isn't there also a safeguard built in there for the fact that the county subsidizes our tipping fee? I mean, they charge us a certain amount of money.
But my point is, Charles Point will look at the trash. I mean, they're not, they're going to look to see if there's stuff in it, because we just, as I said, we just got a fine ourselves. So someone will look, they're not going to know where it comes from if it's, you know, coming from some other place, and I'm sure that's happened, people say that. But we got in trouble here years ago, you were here, I think, maybe you left by then, but four of our own sanitation men picked up commercial garbage here, ended up with substantial, you know...
Substantial, we just settled.
Disciplinary action. You know, it is what it is, Howard. It's not a foolproof system, but, you know, we will do our best, you know, to make sure that we've, you know, we take into consideration the risk, but we have that risk now.
Well, I think the village has more control over their own employees when they're, if they get caught, they're subject to termination. A private Carter and a private employee, they're answerable to the private carting company.
Oh, actually, it's easier to terminate a private Carter than it is a union employee, that's for sure.
I mean, the point, I think that...
But I understand, I totally understand your point. There was a tremendous amount of corruption in the industry. But the most recent contract that went out for at least long-term was Rybrook. They had four bids, four bidders came to the table, and the low bidder was not their current Carter. They changed Carters, they're very happy with, you know, their options in the private sector. All of these bids have to be not only approved by a local municipal board, but they go to this commission in the county for scrubbing, is make sure that these Carters are competent and they pass muster, that they're able to do business in the county. So our bid would be subject to the review of the Westchester Solid Waste Commission. It's, there's no easy answer to what you're saying, that there's, there are opportunities for corruption and fraud in any operation. You know, we have to do our best to weigh that as a factor in whether or not we want to privatize an operation.
Well, there may be easy answers. We don't have the RFP yet. As the last time you were here, you know, we're in a fact-finding mission at this point. We haven't decided to do one thing or the other, so I don't even know what the contract looks like. So the contract may be as described, a tipping fee of some sort, it may be, I have no idea what it's going to look like. So there may be an easy answer, there may not be, but...
Yeah, I think the tipping fee, the village doesn't have an option. The village has an IMA with the county. So, I mean, they will, the village, if they, if it's, if they go there and they say it's from Pleasantville, Pleasantville will get the bill. If they, if it's a private, if they, when they take garbage privately, they pay 50% more and they get billed.
You're right, it's a lot more money.
So it's a lot, it's a big difference in price.
I mean, all, where we are right now, as we said, I think the last time we talked, is it would appear that our neighbors are paying a lot less money than we are in the current environment. And so, if that doesn't raise a red flag in government, then Houston, we have a problem. So we've raised a red flag. It may be that the answer...
And we know you don't like it, okay?
I mean, I don't know what else we could do except to say, whoa, why has it cost us so much more than anybody else pays?
We may find all of these things to be...
Right. I'm just saying, there's a lot more than costs, than money. I mean, money's important, I don't want to minimize it, but there's, there's other factors.
Totally, totally. And as I, as I've said a lot of times so far, if it costs more to do it the way we're doing it, then we have to prove through due diligence that it's worth it. You know, you might go and say, I'm going to buy the leather seats in the new car because it costs more, but it's worth it to me. Somebody else is going to say, I don't care about leather seats, it's not worth it to me. But, you know, certainly in the context of the board, if the local control and the protection of five jobs and the sense of responsiveness that the community has are all not to be found in an outsourced Carter, then that's obviously advantage Pleasantville. But I will say, I have myself had conversations with council members in communities that have outsourced their sanitation for many, many years, and they say, best decision we ever made. I don't doubt, and indeed, the union brought to our attention the suggestion that some other community isn't saying that, and we're in the midst of finding out what they have to say too.
Right, but I think Pleasantville is a right for Pleasantville. I think that's the question, is it right for Pleasantville the way Pleasantville is organized and the type of village it is? So I think that's, it's hard to compare to other communities, some other communities.
I mean, I think you know, you know, I go to bed at night thinking, how do we keep this great place, this great, small, slightly anachronistic place that drew us all here and keeps us here? And there isn't any part of me or anybody who sits here that wants to say, whoop, we've done an Excel spreadsheet, that piece of history is out the door. That's not where we are. But, but I do want everybody to understand that unless we rearrange the chess pieces and unless the union comes to the table to help us, the next five and 10 years don't look good. So that's where we are.
Okay. The, thank you. The other thing, and trustee Cunningham mentioned it, the RFP, I was going to ask about if that, is it possible for the residents to get copies of that? I mean, when it's put out?
I have a, I have a model bid document. I don't think we're going to get an RFP. We have to go out to bid. There's no company that's going to give us a bid price. It is not going to compete in the open like that. So once the board decides they want to go out to bid, then when the bids come in, we can disclose that publicly. But I haven't even asked, because this came up in the 90s when I was here, and the board wanted to get a quote, and all the companies said, you cannot use our quote for any purpose whatsoever, negotiation in particular. So I'm not going to get the quote.
What we do know, because it's a matter of public record, is what Newcastle pays in their existing contract...
Yeah, I have other...
And what Mount Pleasant pays in their existing contract...
And Pelham just went out for a one-year contract extension. I'm trying to get that number.
I was wondering, is...
But I can give you the sample bid document we're looking at.
Is Pleasantville considering garbage? I notice garbage, trash, and recyclables. I was wondering, which or all are they looking to have to contract out?
Everything but the yard waste.
That's the Wednesday pickup, is that the one?
The yard waste would stay with the highway department.
Okay, so that would be, that would be taken up to Charles Point by the highway department?
Or we compost.
The compost, the Wednesday pickup, the papers, and so nothing goes up?
No, no, just the yard waste, Howard. Recycling would go to private, anything that our sanitation division picks up would be in part of the scope. So it would be your household trash and your recyclables, other than your yard waste, which highway picks up.
Wednesday's bulk pickup.
Just so you know, the sanitation department doesn't pick up your yard waste.
The bulk pickup is picked up by sanitation?
It is.
Right, so you're talking about then five days a week is what it would be for the...
That's right.
Okay.
Again, one scenario.
Right.
Don't get, don't get us wrong, viewers.
The contract would mirror exactly the services you have now. At least the bid would call for the same thing, rear yard pickup, same schedule, everything would be identical. We just wanted to see what we could get in terms of a comparable service price.
But we aren't even, just so you know, and for the benefit of people watching, we are so far from getting to that point. This letter that was circulating, I wasn't here maybe and this was discussed, talking about us doing this in the dark of the night, and we're going to surprise the villagers, it's just silly. It's just, it's lunacy. We are, if anything, we're going to talk this to death. You're going to, that's the way we, that's the way we do it.
We have another meeting Thursday with the CSCA.
Right, we're talking to Ad Daseen. But more to your point, Howard, that you want to keep Pleasantville like Pleasantville. I was shocked the other night, we had tax grievance night, we refer to that, and in talking to our tax assessor, we were talking about the fact that we're all paying so much money in taxes, and he allowed that it is now sort of the average amount, that the average Pleasantville person is paying around 20 grand a year in taxes. Now, you're talking about keeping Pleasantville the way it always was. Well, in paying $20,000 a year in taxes, your tax bill, I would maintain that Pleasantville is changing.
Total taxes.
Total, I mean, total taxes, not just here, but total taxes.
Not just the village.
And so, that being the case, if, I don't know what we're going to say, I don't, I don't know what we're going to find, but if it is that we can save hundreds of thousands of dollars here and provide a good service, if that is the case, then as the mayor says, we need to look at that, because, you know, what are we trying to do? We're not trying to change Pleasantville. We're trying, we, like you, are trying to keep Pleasantville, you know, the way it is. So this is, this is not a regressive thing we're trying to do here. We're really trying to make it so that, so that, you know, people who aren't at the highest levels in the financial world can live, can also live here, artists and regular people. That's the way it used to be, that's old Pleasantville.
Violin makers, is what you're saying.
Right, exactly. And that's the old time Pleasantville, and that's rapidly diminishing. So give us a little credit here and give us a little time to sort of work this through. We're, you know, the way we're all talking... work this through. Where, you know, the way we're all talking, it seems like it's fait accompli. It's not. It's not.
Along those, and I don't know, maybe, maybe you can't answer this. But I'm curious, is there, do you have a decision process, making process and a timeline on this thing? I mean, is there, so-
Well, we figured, I can maybe interject. We're in the budget cycle. So, you know, that constrains things. But we talked about business as usual, putting together a budget, including the refuse fund, including all our employees, including everything but this capital expense that we are facing, because we can patch our trucks for the next few months, hopefully the next year if we need to. But, and adopt a budget with everything intact, with raising the money we need to continue the operations the way we expect to continue them after June 1. But we're also telling the union that we would have to go out to bid on June 1 for bids due, well, actually, no later than August 1. I think we expected to switch over if we were switching over. So we would have money available because we would raise that money through the normal tax process. And we would, we would open bids in July, maybe, maybe the end of June even.
So would that mean a decision before June 1 or if the bid opening?
No, within 30 days of June 1, probably.
So, in other words, you would go to the end of June without necessarily making a decision on that and just looking at-
I would say by the end of June, we should have the bids if we, if we are looking to bid, and then analyze the bids in July, get approval to either switch or reject the bids by August. That's really where we are. Because it's really, what are we waiting for if we make a decision to go out to bid? We're just waiting for numbers. If they're not competitive, we've got our budget in place, we've got our guys in place, we have our program running. If they're competitive, then the board's gonna decide whether to award it.
And we've asked, we've asked the union and CSEI, which is coming back to the table this week, has handed our budget, not only our overall village budget, but also specifically the sanitation budget, to the analysts that the Civil Service Employees Association has to analyze the budget. We said, look, if there's some piece of this, you can see the same numbers we see. It looks as though we would save potentially several hundred thousand dollars a year based on what our nearby outsourced communities are paying. If there is something we're missing, by all means, tell us. If there's some means by which we can align our in-house costs to the out-of-house costs better, by all means, tell us. So far, that's not been forthcoming. It, it simply can't be that we don't look at circumstances where government is costing several hundred thousand dollars a year more than our other options. It just can't be. I mean, we're not running a protected workplace here. We're trying to run a, an efficient, fair workplace that's fair to our employees and fair to our residents.
And I hear you. And the, one of the things I said was a right for Pleasantville is because we don't have a standalone sanitation department. We really have a public works department. The sanitation workers, they're available to work in highway and they, they do work-
They're not all available to work in highway under the current union agreement.
They're not available?
And indeed, as you may know, some of these guys don't work a full day. There has been a so-called incentive program that's existed for a long time. It's not unique to Pleasantville, it exists somewhere else, that the guys leave when the job is done, not when the shift is done. And, and they hustle. And to their credit, the argument has always been, hey, if we hustle and hurry, the trash gets picked up sooner. That's a benefit to the community. And the fact that we hustle benefits us because we leave early. I get that. I understand it. I, I can respect it. But recognize there are days, especially the light recycling days, when these guys are getting in their car and driving home at 9:30 in the morning. So I'm not sure that's what we intended.
So, but, so in other words, there is some possibility of the union giving on some of these on initial-
Hey, that would be great. I mean-
They've discussed that, Howard.
That would be great. That would be great. I mean, we've said right up front that this is about trying to align our overall costs with what appear to be the options that are right for the taking. And if the union can assist us in that, we are ready to lock arms with them and work on it. So, appreciate that. So, I will say, you know, in the category of just a little bit of venting, you know, you've heard what, what we have said tonight, which is, we think we're doing what we actually are legally sworn to do, which is represent the interest of the taxpayer. Nobody is intending to stab the employees in the back because those people who work for this village in every capacity are the backbone of the services we offer. We've got a great crew and we want to keep them. By the same token, in the course of this, I have already been, I personally have been accused initially of, of seeking some sort of payback or kickback for this, which is, you know, the first absurd comment. We've been accused, we've been accused of operating in secrecy. We've been accused of, you know, inviting in people that are going to rob and pillage the community. We've, you know, I just have to tell you that-
I don't know where this is coming from.
All of us sit here-
Unsigned letters, maybe.
All of us sit here making about 50 cents an hour. And the reason we sit here for about 50 cents an hour is we care deeply about this place. And so we're willing to sit here until the wee small hours of the morning trying to make it happen.
Actually, I sit here to see how cold it will get outside before Sam Baron wears long pants.
So, you know, I've gotta say that, you know, that piece of it is, is a little frustrating to me that if the response, and I don't mean to suggest that I'm naive about the likely results of, of prodding the sleeping beast. But, you know, the reality is that some of what's happened is exactly what's happened in government for the last 50 or 100 years, which is, let's try to ratchet up the price of, of, an elected official pays for trying to reconsider the way the world is. And we're gonna kick 'em until they realize they'd better not try that again. Maintain the status quo. And if there is any clear evidence for the, the long-term results of that unholy alliance, all you have to do is look north to Albany. It's a train wreck, an absolute utter train wreck. And in the category of never wasting a crisis, we're trying to seize this moment to say, within this village, this small 72, 150-person village, this small, less than 100-person employee unit, let's arms, let's lock arms and figure out a way to make sure that we can continue to live our lives the way we want to. That's what we're saying. So, there's my little rant.
Well, with that, I'll-
It was a rant, boy, I'll tell ya.
You're sorry you came. I'm gonna stop. I don't want you to reduce your hourly rate any lower than this. I think I'll leave. I'll leave now.
I do appreciate that.
And by the way, Sam, it would be irresponsible for us not to look into it. Quote me right next time.
Thank you, Howie. I do appreciate your thoughts. And your continued interest in this is welcome.
My sleepy Norland Saints fan.
So it's been a lively night so far. Does anyone else have anything to add to it? Otherwise, we're gonna bring down-
They're afraid to go.
We're gonna break down the energy a bit by reading our resolutions.
We have a public hearing.
Oh, gosh, I jumped. Thank you. Is there a motion to open a public hearing regarding local law amending chapter 173 of vehicles and traffic, section 173-51, schedule three, school speed limits on Ashland and Nantahagan?
So-
Is there a second?
Second.
This, this is a public hearing we're required to have actually to ratify something we've already done, really essentially a procedural step.
It just allows us to put this speed school, the school speed zone in our codebook. So it's codified and some of this could be written under a specific section of the code instead of a general vehicle and traffic summons.
So this institutes a school speed limit of 15 miles per hour on the entire length of Ashland Avenue and a school speed limit of 15 miles per hour on Nantahagan Road from the intersection with Ashland, 1,320 feet east towards Broadway. And that 1,320 feet is the legally permissible maximum to identify, to establish a school zone.
It codifies it. The limits are already there.
Right, correct.
Yeah, we've established this about a year ago. We have signs up and we're fairly well set up for it. We just need to get it in the book.
Any comment on this subject from any member of the public? Any member of the board?
I think it's great. I just, I hope it's working. It seems to be. Every time I drive down there, it seems, I mean, you can walk faster than that, really.
I, I live-
Good speed walk.
I live on a street where the, a school street where the speed limit's 15 miles per hour. I think, I've lived there for many years. I don't think I've ever, ever seen anybody go 15 miles per hour.
It's really hard to do, but-
So I've always maintained, in all of my years on the board, I've maintained that why pass these laws when we don't enforce them? But that's just me. So, I'm glad to pass it.
Let me encourage all residents of Village Pleasantville to do what I have been doing, and that is to strictly observe the speed limit on areas, on streets like Washington Avenue and on Manville and Bedford around BRS, and see how many cars line up behind you.
It's the best.
And it's a, it's a public service to the community to assist in traffic control in that regard. I encourage you to do it. So, is there a motion to close the public hearing? So, second?
It's so dangerous.
Second?
All in favor? All right. Public hearing is closed. Now to the resolutions. Number 35, Steve.
Resolved, the board trustees, the Village Pleasantville hereby approves a local law amending chapter 173 vehicles and traffic, section 173-51, schedule three, school speed limits as follows. Ashland Avenue, 15 miles an hour. Entire length of Nantahagan Road, 15 miles an hour. Intersection with Ashland Avenue, 1,320 feet east toward Broadway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Most approved.
Resolved at the pre-check registered date of February 22, 2010, covering checks number 65695 through 65791 has been received and they are hereby approved as listed below. The general fund, $145,882.89. The miscellaneous revenue fund, $646.87. Water fund, $99,998. Capital fund, $9,263.95. The refuge fund, $15,637.85. The pool fund, pool fund, $22.18. Just so you know.
There is a fund that's carefully managed.
That's right. Total, $271,451.75.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
The salt bill of $9,000, where do we stand on salt?
We're in pretty good shape. I don't have the exact, between our winter budget is still in really good shape, you know, between labor and materials. But I'll get you the number.
Okay. So we're, we'll be all right for the rest of the season?
Yeah, we're under contract for a certain amount. We have to contract in advance of the season. So we have to take or pay anyway.
Right.
So we end up filling up the salt shed by the end of the spring.
All right. Any other questions?
I would just, you know, in the spirit of the evening, I mean, why not? Why the hell not? You know, and I'm gonna vote for this anyway, but I just think that public funds purchasing Easter eggs is inappropriate. Thank you very much. I believe in the bright line between church and state.
Holiday eggs.
It says Easter eggs.
Yeah, I know.
We amended the text to read colored plastic eggs.
They're for the egg hunt.
I know. And there's a big giant bunny that hops around.
I know. I know.
It makes a lot of children very happy.
Trustee Skarsdottir comments noted. All in favor?
Not of its comments, but of the resolution.
Of the resolution.
Yes. Aye.
Aye. Most approved.
The White House is, I'd like to-
Jonathan?
That's right. The White House does an Easter egg hunt.
Resolved that the board of trustees of the Village Pleasantville hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Day Committee to use Memorial Plaza for Pleasantville Day celebration on Saturday, May 15, 2010, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And further resolved that the board of trustees authorized the police chief to post no parking signs from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 15, 2010, to all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So mark your calendar. Saturday, May 15 is Pleasantville Day. And then looking ahead, I think I have it in my calendar, Friday, June 4 is the fire department parade. So that's the, that's the great springtime one-two punch of exciting events.
Warmer days ahead.
All in favor? All right. Most approved.
Right. Resolved that the board of trustees hereby accepts the following donations to senior center programs. $35 from Lisa Santander and $200 from Anonymous.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Lisa and Anonymous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most approved. Now, let me just back up to the previous one. I meant also to say that Pleasantville Day is annually run by Ginny Brantano, who is the chair of the Pleasantville Day festivities. She's done this for many, many years, does a great job. Yeoman service, thank you very much, Ginny. Steve, number 39.
Resolved, the board trustees of the Village Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendments. Increase to the expense budget code of $60,000 for contractual law services. And an increase of $25,000 from the revenue budget code to the expense budget code. Did I read that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
An increase of 563 taken from insurance contractual to miscellaneous debt service charge. Transfer of $20,000 from contingency to contractual services for law. Transfer of 8560 from contingency to 8560 library for a total of 29,123, going from and to within the budget accounts. I didn't understand, Patty, the first amount of the increase of $60,000 to contractual law. Is that, where's that coming from?
Yeah, it's an appropriated fund balance. That's why there's really no revenue code to pull from.
Oh, I got it.
It's appropriating refuse fund balance to cover some legal expenses in the refuse fund.
And the others are transfers between budget lines?
Yes. The second one just basically recognizes a grant we got. So it has to raise the revenue and the expense, $25,000. And the others are small. The library every year has a budget adopted after hours. So we're not really sure what, what the increases are. So this is the additional money that that library monthly contract will cost us through, through, through the end of May.
So we're required by law to maintain a balanced budget, and that requires these inter-fund transfers on a regular basis in the course of the year in order to do that? All in favor?
Aye.
Most approved. Number 40.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville has received special grants in the 2008, 2009, and 2009, 2010 New York State budget, and whereas there are specific requirements and regulations governing the expenditure of these funds, now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville resolves the following. Administrative, administration of all funds under this grant will be in accordance with all terms and conditions contained in, quote, guidelines to prepare grant agreements for non-construction projects, $50,000 and under fiscal year 2008, 2009, and 2009, 2010, end quote, provided by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. Point two, that Patricia Dwyer, village administrator of the Village of Pleasantville, is hereby authorized to sign legal documents on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville, and that such signatures acknowledged of the acceptance by the board of trustees of compliance with all terms and conditions of the grant agreement to be executed for the grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, these are-
Well, these are two grants we received a while ago, sponsored by Assemblyman Brodsky. They were two $10,000 grants, member items for park equipment. And there was a point in time when the state was pulled back our member items, saying they didn't have any money for funding them. Then they resurrected funds for them.
And now they do.
So there's money to be had. Then there was the question whether or not we could combine them because $10,000 wasn't enough to do anything.
Is the ink still wet on the bill?
Well, yeah, I spoke last week to the woman who's, you know, assigned to our district to monitor the grant. And we're, we're trying to work out under a $20,000 budget, the installation of a pretty nice piece of equipment that the Prab picked out. It's just that they're arguing now that the budget doesn't include installation, it's only equipment. So it's, it's just been one of the worst experiences to try to get this funding in order. But-
Don't prepay anything.
Yeah, I still don't, I still don't think this is the time. Yeah, we spend money on, we have a lot of parks, beautiful parks in this village. And, you know, there's a match involved here, right? Isn't there?
No, this, this one there is not. But it appears we're going to be putting out of pocket if I have to install and put down a base. And I wanted all that to be part of the grant. But now it's equipment only. So we're arguing that that makes no sense. You know, I mean, what am I supposed to do with equipment that needs to be installed by a certified installer?
I know this has gone back and forth 100 times. But I, you know, I still don't feel as if this is the time to-
Take state money? If you don't want to take it, tell me.
Nope. I don't want to take state money. I don't want to take county money. Do we have to build like Little Kitty affordable housing if we take this?
Cozy, cozy driveway.
Fortunately, it's not subject to anything but an audit that we go out to bid for the equipment, you know. We comply with a whole bunch of things. We comply with anyway, you know, drug-free workplace, all these other little things.
Do we get to, I mean, we're just, we're just basically saying that in this, that we're, we're gonna abide by the, by the, in accordance to the terms of-
Yeah, there's no collusion in the bid. Yeah, I can tell you the-
But we, do we get another nod at this, yes or no, if, if they indeed say, no, they're not gonna cover installation?
Well, they're giving us, I'll try to spend all of $20,000 on buying things. But then, you know, we have to decide how we're gonna afford to put it in.
See, that's the thing, is that, you know-
Put a surface down and-
No, you buy, you spend $20,000 in, in buying playground equipment. And it's probably gonna cost you $20,000 to install- gonna cost you $20,000 to install it, you know. It's usually the way things go.
No, it can, yeah.
So, I just like, I just don't see spending $20,000 on playground equipment right now. I mean, I'm sorry. I think our kids have a lot, and they, I don't know. $20,000 here, $20,000 there.
Right now, we're trying to reconstruct the grant, so we're able to do this.
But we're putting it in where we already have playground equipment, but this playground equipment is for older kids, so it's, it's just...
Are you against the children in Pleasantville?
No, I'm not. I want them to go find Easter eggs, Brian, okay? I don't, I'm not, I'm not taking away their Easter eggs, okay? I'm taking away something, I'm not even taking anything away, they don't have it!
I see the beginning is very compromised here.
What can I tell you? Every year we get, well, not every year, but most of the time we get invited to participate in these legislative member item things, and we send up a wish list of many things, and every year comes back, we have $10,000 for you, what would you like, you know, and then we try to say what we think would be appropriate, and then that's...
Well, if it was like to put, to replace what we pulled out of the pool...
It always comes down to playground equipment, or...
One of the nice things about these play equipment structures, though, is a great place to hide Easter eggs.
We had a great place, we had all these great trees up, and Danny had them. Now I don't know where you're gonna hide Easter eggs, because there's no place to hide them.
Has Steve Johnson, has Steve Johnson had any ideas about installation? I recall when we did the tour of the park sites, and Steve was part of that, we were down at Soldiers and Sailors, and we were discussing this grant, and discussing the equipment, and discussing another community, or maybe it was within this community, where equipment had been purchased and it was assembled by, you know, a mom and dad troop with some participation.
We did that here. Three parks were installed by people.
It's also from Sailors.
So, so the question really is, you know, what's the staff and incidental costs associated with this, and I'm not sure that it's another $20,000.
No, now you can't do it.
But it would be interesting, it'd be interesting to know what it is.
No, now you can't do it because of, of, you know...
You need a certified...
Possible legal ratifications.
You need a certified installer supervising the work of volunteers.
Right, oh.
That's what you need.
It could be done that way.
You don't have to have...
Am I unfair in thinking that we're not looking at $20,000 in the installation costs here? I mean, it's $20,000 in park equipment. What is the installation?
We're not even looking at $20,000 worth of park equipment, because...
Very kind, you reserve some for installation, right.
By the time I put down, yeah, by the time I pay the installation charges and the surface charge, we probably got $10,000 of our own to add if they're not going to include it. We're trying to get within the $20,000 budget a pretty nice piece of equipment, a nice subsurface, plus professional installation, it's gonna be about $16,000, $17,000.
And again, it's going to where we already have existing equipment, it's just age, more age, it's age-appropriate for a different age group. So, that's all I'm saying. It's not like we're putting a playground equipment where we don't have anything, and the kids don't have anything to do but stand there and look at each other. That's not what we're doing. We're putting more playground equipment where we already have playground equipment.
Is it for an older age group? Or is it for the younger age group?
No, it's a little older, it's probably five to eight, nine.
That's just cold.
Then we have the little tot stuff.
I mean, we're just, we're just, we're getting killed, especially, you know, I don't know, we're just like, you know, 20 here, 30 here, 15 here...
We can always turn down the grant, right? If they don't give it to us.
You don't want the grants, they'd be happy to take your money and give it to Briar Cliff.
Right.
She has to throw that in there!
Why don't we approve it?
I'm making a point, someone will get this money, it's a member item.
Why don't we approve this, and then you come back and let us know where you made the negotiation?
This is Assemblyman Brodsky's member items.
I say we approve it.
They will go to somebody in his district.
Exactly. Right, I see. We're not, we're not saving, it's not like they're gonna put it back into the stabilized New York fund.
That's not the point. The point is that how much additional money do we have to spend in order to...
Well, that's the point, is right.
It's still an open question.
So that's the issue, so...
But part of the, part of the application requires resolutions.
Okay, and we have some flexibility in how we spin this out, and you're obviously on the case about it, so...
We don't have to send the same, we don't have to send...
Right. So let's approve it, then we can figure out what...
Did we have a second on this?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can still say no to actually spending money. I'm not spending money here, I'm just approving...
Well, you're authorizing, if everything's in order, me to send it all in, but we don't know what the order is yet.
So it's a nay for me.
Okay.
I don't agree with this. And the Prab people will kill me, because I sat there and discussed it with them. But I told them I didn't agree with them either, so...
Okay, and I respect that. I do, for the benefit of those watching, this has been a discussion with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for a good long while, and they have invested quite a bit of effort in trying to identify equipment and the like, and we'll see what comes of our proposal to Assemblyman Brodsky. Resolution forty-one.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the Village Attorney to proceed with settlement of certiorari petition by the Pleasantville Country Club as follows. This is for assessment years 2007 to 2009, there's three of them. The original assessed value was $419,710, which was applicable for all three of those years, and the proposed assessments drop in '07 to $303,010, in '08 to $308,860, and to 2009 to $296,360. And further, that the Treasurer is authorized to issue applicable refund in the amount of $66,598.76 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
We are advised on matters of this kind by our attorneys, and recently switched our tax certiorari representation to Keenan Bean, and we have a memo on this subject from them, for the benefit of those watching, this is a matter that affects actually only part of the country club, it's a parcel of the property that includes part of the nine-hole golf course, including the clubhouse, pool, and tennis courts, and it is the advice of counsel that we proceed with this settlement.
So we got this assessed, is that correct? They, he went out, Timmins went out there and did, Jim Timmins went out there and looked at the clubhouse and everything else?
I read it, there was an appraisal.
Yeah.
So...
When we have, you know, anticipate, you know, some of larger commercial properties, we'll get a professional appraisal, you know, to back up the argument we're making.
And we, and we got that in this instance?
I think the country club did get an appraisal, yes. It's been on, it's been on the agenda for a while, I don't know, the last one we've gotten, Foxwood and Commons, I think we did do the country club as well.
Well, as you, as has already been read in the, in the resolution, it's a certiorari that affects the 2007, 2008, 2009 assessment years, and was a matter that actually was initially unable to be resolved and was headed towards trial, and in the end came to this settlement, so...
Did the, did the town settle this, or did we settle it?
Well, if you read the memo, it indicates that the town had settled it earlier.
I don't have a memo, I don't have the memo, that's why I'm asking the question.
It's attached to the...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Move further back.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number forty-two.
More bad news. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the Village Attorney to proceed with settlement of certiorari petition by DS Pleasantville LLC as follows. This is for the Key Foods building, the old Grand Union. This is for assessment years 2003 through 2009. Each of those years, the original assessment was $486,326, and the proposed settlements went down to, from 2003, $325,000, 2004, $324,000, 2005, $308,450, 2006, $308,450, and it's the same number all the way down to 2009. And further, that the Village Treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refund in the amount of $83,653.01 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, for the benefit of those watching, the numbers we read, in this case, the numbers Brian just read, an assessed value of $486,325, is the assessment does not refer to the actual market value that's multiplied by a multiplier, and in this case refers to a market value of just below $4 million, so...
It should, it should also be noted that because it started in 2003, is the first year they applied, correct, for reassessment, and they applied every year after, so if we didn't settle this, we'd be going back...
Well, it's not, they didn't reapply until it's resolved, it goes back to the year in which they...
But don't you have to, every year, apply?
You can, you don't have to, but once, once you do petition, it would be logical that you would every year until you're satisfied that...
With the result.
This is, this is seven years, Brian. Don't we try to do it before seven years?
You know, you've had an assessor work here previously that had a, you know, different philosophy, so...
Okay. So between Jim Timmins and our new law firm, I think we're making good, although dispiriting progress in clearing out this backlog.
So the idea, though, is that we not have this kind of, these long...
Won't be hanging over us.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
These are just disastrous.
Because you can get a pretty good indication when a certiorari comes in from a commercial property, you know, whether or not they're way out of line, and it should be addressed immediately.
Right.
Because it'll only pile up like they do.
They did.
It just abazes me, though, that in the best real estate market that we've ever seen, 2003 to 2008, the original assessed value, the difference between the original assessed value and the proposed settlement is 25% differential, and it's lower. I just don't, I know the way the math works, I don't get it. It just doesn't, some, part of me says we should fight these things, but, you know, I'm not well versed enough to do it, but it just instinctively seems wrong.
I mean, I don't think it's fair to say we don't fight them, I mean, we have an assessor and an attorney.
Take them to court, we never, I haven't seen one go ever go to court, but take them to court and see what judge says. I mean, when you start to talk about $100,000, $700,000, $87,000, $86,000, you know, it, the court fees become kinda insignificant, let the judge tell you what he thinks.
But the, the thing is, is that what's killing us is the, is the condos, and they have one of their strongest lobbies in New York and in Washington, and they're being basically, when they're only being assessed on a third of their value...
I, I hear ya, it's just 2006, $486,000 for Key Foods, dropping to $308,000. I just, you know...
Actually, I don't, I don't understand Key Food, because it's not like they're a rental property that they've had vacancies, they've been fully occupied.
It, it just, it defies logic.
But, I mean, the question is, was the assessment fair to begin with?
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but...
You know, the same calculus prevails when a residential homeowner comes, if there's a case to be made, they're successful.
I think it's fair to say that every single, almost every single commercial property is now filing these, and most of the condos and co-ops do it routinely every three years.
They do.
There's a three-year stay, and then they go right at you again, every single one of them. Why? Because they're good at it, and they know they can, they know they can rake us over the coals like this. And it's just blatantly not fair. Instinctively, it doesn't make sense to me, on the best real estate market ever, assessed value, how badly off were we? $486,000 to $308,000. That's remarkable. That's incompetent.
On whose part?
I don't know!
You're the one that has encouraged everyone in the community to do exactly this.
Well, if you get, if you get these kind of results, why wouldn't you? If you get these kind of results, why, I'm also saying we should fight it in court. I mean, I'm tempted to fight it in court. If these are the kind of results, I mean, because somebody's picking, the rest of us who don't fight it are picking up this $83,000 differential.
Okay, well, we have a memo from our attorneys, in whom I, I at least have confidence, that they have described to us the decision-making process in a confidential memo, and I, for one, am, am in agreement with the argument.
I'm not...
And that all of these things were settled in the town of Mount Pleasant before they were settled.
Well, and that's the biggest problem that we have.
And that is the problem, that, that is...
The town settles, and then it makes it harder for us to fight it.
The town settles, and then they, then they come to us, and say, you know, they, they...
Well, as you know, we have the same assessor, so it's not unexpected that the assessor in jurisdictions will have the similar...
Well, the town settles, and then they come and give us a levy.
It's kinda interesting.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion approved. Number forty-three, Brian.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the...
Oh, Steve, sorry. Was it?
Who is it?
Steve.
Thank you for keeping track of that.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the proposal from Charles Manganaro Consulting Engineers for replacement of a stone masonry wall, as per the terms set forth in their proposal letter dated February 29, 2010.
Is there a second?
Second.
Steve, maybe you would want to describe this, since you are the one who has more professional knowledge and also assisted in thinking out what we might do.
Well, this is for that section of masonry wall by Foxwoods, which we were talking about just recently, in front of the Village Tennis Courts on the south end of that, it's the south end of that property right off Bedford Road. The wall is pretty high there, it's about six feet above the sidewalk, south of the southerly entrance to Foxwood, and it's built on a rubble base, which has meant that over the years, the wall has listed toward the sidewalk, and was in danger, portions of it, of coming down. And I believe our DPW employees assisted the wall in falling in the other direction so that it would not be hazardous to pedestrians and others, a section of it at any rate. There continues to be additional length of that wall, which is in danger of coming down. And this proposal is for removing some additional piece of wall, and rather than reconstructing stone wall in the open gap, to finish off both ends and to replace in the open gap a decorative steel fence material, which would suffice to keep folks who are on the sidewalk from falling down what would remain of the sub-base, which is probably a three or four-foot drop into the interior of the property down by the tennis courts. We had looked at a proposal from the engineers for replacing this wall, I don't recall what the dollar amount was for doing the masonry work, it was pretty steep, and I went out and looked at it, at the suggestion of Mayor and Board with Steve Johnson, our DPW Superintendent, and with our Village Engineer, and we decided that it would be possible to, to fill that gap with the decorative steel fencing at a much reduced cost, and that's what this proposal is here for. I think we need something in that gap, because it would be a safety issue just to have it open where you could fall off into the interior of the property.
That's some playground equipment.
And that, actually, if you look at the openings, you drive along the road, I think it's actually nice to have an opening there, because you can see into the Village Tennis Courts, you can see who's playing there, and from a standpoint of having some visual surveillance, piece of public property, I think it's actually kinda nice to have it open, and I think the steel decorative fence would be a nice addition. We have something similar to that fencing, by the way, over here, where Bedford Road crosses the Somerville Parkway. If you can visualize that area, when you're over there, yeah, you'll see it, there's a low stone wall on top of the, the bridge, and then there's a decorative, decorative steel fence, tubular steel fence on top of that. Very similar to what I had suggested to the engineers, that they scope out for this opening. Very similar to what I had suggested to the engineers that they scope out for this opening.
Not, not that they have a, a voice here, but have we let Foxwood know what this is going to look like and what we're planning?
Well, Peter and I discussed it and I think Peter had suggested that we...
We certainly should let them know.
Yes.
Patty, can you?
I'll, I'll speak with Eileen West, I need an illustration, I think the PMC will give me one and we'll, I think they'll be thrilled to have it.
So at any rate, the resolution that we have before us is to Charles Manganaro Consulting Engineers for their work in developing the design and the contract documents for, for this project and it is a total of $4,855. Patty, I mean, as Steve described, I don't think it's something that's discretionary that we have to do something in this area.
Right.
We do, we, we have to repair the wall.
We have to repair it, right.
So, okay, so of this nearly $30,000 expense, $28,200, five, nearly $5,000 of it is for design consulting and another, I don't know what it is, $10,000 or so is for screwing around with the existing wall, either shoring it up or putting a stone motor cap on it. I mean, why can't we just dig it out?
Well, if you dig it out, what you're...
Just put the fence in, I mean...
Let me, yeah.
This fence is costing $225 a foot to do.
Dig what out, John? Maybe I just...
Dig out the stone footing and just put the steel fence, put the fence in.
Well, there'd be nothing holding the earth back. The sidewalk and the earth adjacent to it is anywhere from three to four feet above a sheer drop down to the property down in the back. And if you took out the, the wall, you're just going to have a dirt soil, vertical soil embankment and...
We can't put some sort of fill in there?
Well, that, they, what's in there now are, are boulders that were providing the support for the wall on top.
So can we take the wall down to the ground and then put the fence posts up right behind it?
Well, essentially what the proposal is, is take the wall down, flush with the earth adjacent to the sidewalk and then smooth off the top of that and put the wall, put the fence right along. It would be more expensive to take that foundation down all the way to the ground on the bottom backside, and we discussed that and what you would do if you did do that as far as stabilizing that bank. But if you leave the footing in place and just cap it at the level of the soil adjacent to the sidewalk, that's, that actually is the cheapest way to do it. You don't have to put anything in to hold that soil back by the sidewalk and then the fencing will just be corred into that footing. They'll, they'll core in epoxy in the posts and pop in the fence man.
Great. Our guys can't do that? They'll take them a stone down?
We are doing that.
Well, they are taking the stone down and taking it away.
I mean, this proposal, if you remember, was...
Our guys.
Yeah, this, this proposal was twice as high.
The $4,500 for cap and mortar is our guys' cost?
No, the cap and mortar is masonry work, I don't think we have qualified people for that. I mean, recognize the numbers you're quoting here, which is a, is a probable constructing cost of $23,300, is just the engineer's estimate, it's not a bid and the bid may come in higher or lower.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with that, that's why I just, using it for whatever it is.
But we are in the circumstance where, as you may recall, the previous proposal was quite a bit higher and through the good assistance of Steve, one of the many advantages of having a registered landscape architect, in the harness on the board, have I think come to the point of, of what appears to be about the most realistic option short of a chain link fence. And even the condition we have right now, which is a chain link fence adjacent to the rubble wall, is, is not a, not a long-term solution, so...
Yeah, it's, it's put up temporarily.
Right.
There's always...
But this, I think this would be a really nice looking solution, you know, visual surveillance, you can see the people on the tennis court, be neat, be clean, be finished off and for about at least, I think, amount of money, we can get into that problem and get out.
And these design services, that's all required, there's...
Well, you're going to need to have a PE sign off on, on something like this because it's structural.
And somebody's got to put the documents together for the bid.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved. Number 44.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, based upon the recommendation of the police chief, hereby approves the hiring of Randy DiPaola as part-time school crossing guard at a salary of $20.62 per hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a letter from the police chief. Randy is currently an intern for the police department and has volunteered for this and would be used to fill in when there are vacancies for the crossing guards, which is much appreciated. We don't have a very big bench for the crossing guards and it's, it's a happy development to fill that out, so... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 45. Jonathan.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise a, for a bid for a weatherization project at the recreation center.
Is there a second?
Second.
We asked an engineer, Kevin Miley, Miley, Hillman Miley, engineering, who had done the condition report on the old rec center at Bedford Road and Red Oak Lane, to come back and look at that building now that has been vacant for a couple of years and assess the question of whether we were properly safeguarding it and whether anything needed to be done. There are obviously some visible problems that need to be attended to, but Kevin also returned the suggestion to us that there were some other steps we needed to take, including restoring heat in the building. A couple of years ago, we were very close to selling it to a Pleasantville family who proposed to buy it for a single-family home use and as part of the due diligence of that process, we were required to remove an underground oil tank which was feeding the, the heating system. So when we did that with the expectation that the closing would happen shortly thereafter, it rendered the building without heat. So among the steps to be taken here would be to restore a new interior fuel oil tank so that the existing heating plant could be used. Kevin's advice is that we keep the building at a low but nonetheless heated temperature because otherwise we're at some risk of damaging it further. So Patty, I'm, I'm correct that you've got to send this out with the proviso that contractors give us numbers that will be good for up to six months?
From the date of a bid award, yes.
Right. And our reason for that is, as you know, we continue to, to be soliciting and talking to people about proposals for adaptive reuse of that building and in the event that we might arrive at a potential sale, it would give us some flexibility in thinking about whether we want to undertake any expenses on the building. The other aspect of it is that we are hopeful that if we are forced into a situation where we have to spend some money on it, the money we spend on it would increase its market value because we would have done work that the next owner would have had to do anyway, so...